Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the August 16th, 2017 meeting of the Dampel Wolf County Planning and Zoning Commission. We appreciate your presence and thank you for being here and taking interest in the actions that affect our community. As tradition, we'll begin our meeting in prayer. If you bow with me, please. Our God and Father in heaven, we thank thee for this day and all the blessings of it. We thank thee for the health you've given us that allows to be up and about this day. We thank thee for this community we live in, this country we live in, the safety and protection you provided for us, the freedoms you provided for us, watching over and caring for us and giving us another day of health. We pray for all those in our country that are having conflicts, those who have been injured, and the families of those that have lost loved ones, that you would bless and comfort and heal us and bring us together and unite us as a country. We pray for our president, that he would make decisions that would bring us together as a people, unite us, and we could live together as brothers and sisters. We pray for our servicemen and women who continue to fight to defend our freedoms, to watch over and care and protect them, let those conflicts be over and bring them back home to their loved ones as soon as possible. Be with us this day as commissioners and help us make decisions, be betterment for all that are involved here this day, and particularly for the betterment of this community. Continue to watch over and care for us, guide, guard, direct us in all things, forgive us when we fail you. Christ name we pray. Amen. First item on the agenda is to call the meeting to order, which we will do. Secondly, I'd like to introduce Steve Hunter, who is our new planning and zoning director. If you've not met Steve, he is sitting here on the front row, and he'll have some things to say as we go through the agenda, but we're certainly glad to have Steve with us. He's been with us since August the first and hit the ground running, so to speak, and been working diligently to help us do the things we need to do to be much, much more effective maybe and maybe better meet the needs of all our constituents. Thank you, Steve, for being a part of us. If you've not met him, please take the time to do so and say hello. IMC approval minutes, regular meeting, July 5th, 2017.
I'm the commission to approve.
Susie Moose, we approve.
Second.
Jeff seconds. Question, discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous. IMD financial report. Steve, you're gonna speak to that.
I can't say much. A little different format this month than maybe what you guys have seen in your packet. Budget committee met about some items, but we really didn't get into the financial report. We're gonna push it to the top of the agenda as just a courtesy review. It's in your packet. If you have any questions, myself or Jenny can answer those questions. We're gonna change the format of it maybe down the road a little bit, do a couple things with that balance sheet to simplify some things. So it's in your packet as you normally have seen it. We're here to answer any questions. One other thing that our budget committee chairman has suggested, historically what we've done is we've had an item at the bottom that says "Pay the Bills." As you guys know, when you guys put categories in the budget, it gives us authorization to pay the bills, really, whether you're doing before or after kind of this kind of courtesy vote. For example, we make the payroll every week, and we don't wait till you all meet and say, "Pay the bills," so we can get our payroll. So what we're gonna do is, the financial report's gonna have all your kind of monthly information, and then we're gonna start to put a complete list of checks that were issued on each finance report. We talked to the chairman about that. So as opposed to just a routine motion at the end that says, "Pay the bills," obviously Jenny has to pay some bills in a timely fashion that don't always happen after the meeting. Again, one is payroll, some are just routine things. So what we typically would do is you guys give us authorizations to manage the money in the budget category by category, and we can make out as narrow as you want. And then each month, we'll start putting a list of checks on that finance report. And again, they're there as a courtesy review. You guys can ask us any questions about any specific payment, down to, you know, 90 bucks for this, and then Jenny could answer that. So we'll start attaching that list of checks, and every single time, you'll see three of them, which would be the three payrolls for the three employees, down to the dollar. So that's kind of how we're gonna do the finance report, if you guys are good with it. But again, if any specific questions, we'd be glad to answer them, or Jenny could tell you what she put on that report.
Questions?
I have one. Steve, what if there's a bill that we have an issue with and we're not sure if we want to pay it as of?
Yeah. Well, that's-
How do we deal with that?
Well, I think we need to address that when we drill down and talk about the budget, if there's an item in there. I mean, what I saw, and what Jenny can tell you, what she basically had me sign or do were timely bills that were fairly routine in nature, payroll. Can't think of Jenny as something that was, you had, several had to go out, they were of the nature of-
With the delay in the meeting, we had bills that absolutely had to go out by the eighth, so that's why I went ahead and paid what we usually would approve on the eighth.
If there's one that's specific, I think, you know, I think staying connected with our budget committee, we're gonna meet more often, I think we can talk about specific things, but most of those seem pretty routine and we're pretty obligated to do. Bills of that nature where we're gonna make a purchase or something, I think we would have got authorization from you guys up front, and the budget committee would know kind of, you know, for example, we're gonna buy a computer or do something like that. The ones I saw on there were pretty much routine things, and then it's mostly just gonna be payroll, it looks like. Don't anticipate spending a whole lot of money on anything, gas, payroll, and whatever those monthly bills are.
Motion to approve the financial report. Vince?
Yes? Make a motion.
Vince Moose, we approve.
One second.
And Terry seconds. Question, discussion on the motion to approve the financial report. Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous. Letters of credit. Steve, you're gonna address that.
The letters of credit's a new item on your agenda. And maybe we haven't done this in the past, but I think the planning commission needs to give authorization for us to do what we do housekeeping-wise with letters of credit. You guys maybe aren't familiar with what we do. You should have something in your packet that looks like this, that I had Jenny do on our two types of sureties that we're holding. Should have this little chart. And what we actually got on the agenda are two letters of credit that I need you guys to give me authorization to act on. I would anticipate this would be a vote on the whole packet, both of them at one time, six of them if we had six. And what we're doing is we're releasing a letter of credit, as you can see, for the Cattlemen's Roadhouse, an amount of $91,692. That was a letter of credit we were holding on that construction project. And again, what we do is we get these letters of credit in for different projects, and again, that's why you got the summary. Typically, those are bank letters of credit. Occasionally, we call a letter of credit, we have to cash them, and we have four of those in the bank, and we're holding money on four old projects. Again, that's just by reference. The city's gonna end up maybe working on a couple of these. These are the ones we're holding in the bank. The other letters of credit, I think it's important, if we're gonna release one, the planning commission's giving me authority to release it. So number one is just a simple release, the project's done, and we're basically giving that letter of credit back to the customer for $91,000 and some change. Number two is actually a reassign, and this one's a little tricky. We've been holding the letter of credit on a Berry Metcalf, and $130,000, that's a reduction from the original letter of credit, and that was First State Financial. And then he's basically asked us to accept a new letter of credit in substitution, or what I'll call reassign, a letter of credit to a new bank. So that's pretty straightforward. However, what he actually wants us to do is release the original letter of credit. I'm not comfortable at this time releasing that letter of credit, because the new letter of credit we've got doesn't really meet the technical requirements of how we do letters of credit. Our letters of credit would be one year, and then we renew. This letter of credit showed up from the Southern National Bank, and $130,000, but it was an 18-month letter of credit dated March 31st, 2017, and showed up at our office Monday. So I'm not sure if we can accept an 18-month letter of credit. Number one, it puts us in kind of a compromised position, so I don't want to release the original one until I talk to the client, try to figure out why this started in March, we didn't get it till August, and then talk to both banks and make sure we're covered with this new letter of credit. But I'm okay with reassigning it, and basically what that's doing is we're accepting his second letter of credit in the amount of $130,000 to finish that project, but I'm not gonna release the first one until I understand why we got the term wrong on that second letter of credit. So again, we're just reassigning. I think in the future, what you're gonna see is the words "release," "reassign," "cash," "call," whatever, with our letters of credit. And currently, you've got eight on this list, four in the bank and four that we're holding. And if you guys have any questions about letters of credit, what they are, how they come in, what we hold them on, I'd be glad to answer any questions about that. Any guidance you can give me or turning on that, but I think that's the safest way I know to go about number two at this point, until we figure out what that letter of credit just came in Monday.
I would agree with that.
Thank you, Bruce.
Questions? Any of these? Anything? Hearing none, motion to approve. Jeff Moose, we approve.
I'll second.
Susie seconds. Question, discussion on the motion to approve the letters of credit report. Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous. Item else, subdivision approvals. Minor plat, Caleb Ruckel, 1205 Berger Knob Road, Junction City, Kentucky.
I'll lead off and hand it off to the surveyor. We had a technical review a week ago on the cases you see that are in items F and G. These public hearings and subdivision approvals, my notes are pretty specific on these two minor plats. Nancy's here on the first one, we've got a gentleman here on the second one. Everything, technical review went pretty straightforward, just had a few notes. Everything has been corrected on the plat that I saw off my check-in sheet, and I'll let Nancy tell you what we're doing, but it's pretty straightforward on this one. And again, technical review, looked it over. Nancy turned everything in timely, and everything's correct according to my notes.
I'm glad to answer any questions. Nancy's here.
Good morning, folks. I don't need a microphone. Mr. Ruckel owns several acres out on Berger Knob. There is a house on this particular tract that he is selling to an individual, and in order to do so, we needed to break off the house and an acre.
Questions? Jeff Moose, we approve.
I'll second.
Terry seconds. Question, discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Item two, minor plat on an LC Niceley, 5578 and 5580 68 gravel switch.
Again, technical review, met to review this plat, again, minor plat, pretty straightforward. We had a checklist on that. Had a few items on the checklist, and we'll talk about some of this later related to the application, but the professional folks here got everything turned in to us yesterday. Everything looked good with the revised minor plat. I'll again let him tell you kind of what we're doing, it's fairly, fairly routine here. Again, we just had a few minor comments at the technical review about signature blocks and about signatures, and so again, everything was turned in on time yesterday, and he's here to give you a little quick summary of that plat.
I'm TJ Daniel, the land surveyor. Just a simple minor consolidation plat. Mr. Niceley's selling the back a little over three tenths of an acre to Mr. Schwartz in the back. It's basically just about all it is.
Motion to approve. Jeff Moose, we approve.
I'll second.
Susie seconds. Question, discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item G, the public hearing on the site plan for safety LLC, DBA Dampel Marathon, located 15, or excuse me, 1050 Houstonville Road, Danville.
All right. This one's interesting, and we'll spend just a tad bit more, talk about this, because this leads into a lot of stuff we've been talking about internal. This is a site plan approval. As you guys know, we basically do seven processes here at the planning commission. Site plans are one of them, plats are one of them. This is a very interesting case to me, because I was actually surprised we had to go through this process for this, because what we're doing basically on a very, very small piece is we're demoing a portion of an existing gas station and adding an addition of 960 square feet on the back. To me, this seemed fairly routine when you're already zoned commercial and the building's already on the ground. I was a little surprised that we had to go through a full site plan approval, engineer drawings, technical review, planning commission approval, to basically doing a small addition on the back of an existing gas station. Again, I'm not familiar with the property as far as the marathon historically, but again, because it's a site plan approval, and our ordinance says everything gets site plan approval, and the termination was made before I got here that this has to go through the process, this applicant had to file this application accompanied with a fee of $561, hire survey engineering firm to do basically a full set of drawings. You guys have to look at this very small addition on this existing site. We were joking around a little bit, it's so small, the landscape ordinance triggered one tree that you see on there. I mean, it really is small. I would have thought this goes straight to a building permit. I was a little taken aback that you have to do this process, but this is what we've been talking about, maybe streamlining. This type of thing probably should have maybe went straight to zoning or building, but it has to go through this process. Everything was done accurately on the drawing, we had to do a few housekeeping items. Nancy did a great job getting all these little things we asked fixed, just some notes and things like that, but this is a perfect example of something that I guess I wouldn't, didn't think we'd be sitting here reviewing at this level. I mean, we've got a site plan that's gonna be submitted on the 24th on a big project that's new to town coming up, supposed to be here this week. That's the type of thing I assumed were site plan approvals, you know, parking, landscape, buildings. I didn't know 900 square foot additions on an existing business zone commercial triggered this type of review. And I understand now why it does, and that's one of the things I think we need to talk about, but it's pretty straightforward. They're actually demoing a portion and adding a portion smaller than what they're taking off the building. So we gotta get through the site plan approval before then they can come in here and file for a zoning permit, pay us a few more bucks, and then go see the building inspector and pay them some money. So there's actually three approvals that had to be done on this to get this addition going on the building. And it's pretty straightforward, and Nancy will give you a little bit more, but I'm not familiar with the gas station or what historically they've done, but it really, really seemed minor on the back, but there is a section of zoning ordinance that triggered this review. I'd be glad to answer any questions about that part of it, and Nancy can tell you what the applicant's timeline is and what they're doing.
Questions? Debbie, you want, Nancy, go ahead.
Yes. This is the marathon station on Houstonville Road, just south of the Shoe Factory. It's been there for decades. It was originally the old Bond store, and that's the way we refer to it, the old bonded gas station. There is a small building in behind that they are removing, but the ordinance says anything over 25% of the existing building or less than 3,000 square feet does not have to go before, or over, excuse me, over 3,000 square feet has to go before planning and zoning. So with that information, that is the reason we are bringing in the site plan. The tree back there, the reason I put it where it is, is to shield the lady in, I think the name is Johnson, she, it's a residential house. I put it back there so that from her house, she's looking at a beautiful tree instead of the gas station, or that's my thinking on it.
Questions for Nancy?
I've got one, Nancy.
Okay.
Number three in the purpose of the plat, it states that the construction began August 18th, 2017, and complete by August 18th, 2019.
Yeah.
It's gonna take two years to build a 160 square foot addition.
No, no, but I didn't want to, I didn't want to put it in a timeframe that they might not have had it built in that-
And what's the point in putting that on there?
It's in the zoning ordinance.
Well, that's right.
Let me address that real quick, Nancy. So that was one of my notes too, you guys. I had a note, those that served on the technical review, Terry and William were there. I had a question about that note. I thought that was odd to me, too. Why do we need the note? I mean, to start the construction, but the termination of the construction note seemed kind of odd, and I suggested, hey, make it as flexible as possible, so last thing you're gonna do is put something that specific, and if it goes longer, then we're back having to amend it again. The anticipation is they're gonna get it done quicker, but I thought maybe we could redraft the note. We talked about maybe just saying something different. I think it was already on there, and she'd already prepared it, but in the future, I haven't latched on to in the zoning ordinance why we need to have specific start and end date construction notes. I saw something about construction in general, but not how that we have to actually put a window on the site plan.
I think you want things done in a timely manner.
Yeah, yeah. The note was incidental to me. I just wanted to make sure it didn't compromise the client in any way on the tail end side. I think it would just be an anticipated start date. But what we're doing next, again, is then we go to the zoning permit, and then we sort of fine tune what's happening, and anticipations, they're gonna do that fairly quickly when we move forward. But yeah, that note seemed a little odd to me, and we brought that up to technical review, and Nancy just dressed it up a tad bit, but it was already on there, and it just seemed a little strange. But I don't think it hurts anything unless they went past that timeline, and then technically they would be in compliance with something on that site plan, and we'd have to come back and amend it.
This being listed as a public hearing, anyone want to speak to this? Debbie, just introduce yourself, please, give your address when you get up there. We have the mics, so we get that all this recorded, actually.
My name is Deborah Johnson, and I'm the property owner to the south. I'm the only residential neighbor that's there, and-
Give your address, Debbie.
I'm sorry, 221 Lincoln Avenue.
Thank you.
I do have some concern about any changes there, and I wasn't really familiar with what they were proposing exactly, except what was stated in the letter that was sent to me, but one of my concerns is about rainwater runoff. It's already an issue because of the difference in elevation between Houstonville Road and my property, which is, I'm estimating, 10 to 12 feet lower, and the back of the existing gas station slopes pretty dramatically down, and there is a problem when there's heavy rain. Water washes toward the foundation of my house. So I certainly wouldn't want to see anything done that would make that problem worse, and if something could be done in this process that would improve that situation, I'd appreciate it very greatly, because it is eroding the foundation of my carport. It's cracking and coming apart. So if something could be done to address that, that would be very much appreciated. I'm assuming the stakes that are out were from a survey, and when I saw them there, I was a little surprised, because I've lived on that property for either 23 or 24 years, and the stakes were marking location for the property line, if that's indeed what they were. That doesn't match with my understanding of where the property line was, and the stake closest to my house actually physically touches my back patio. So that was, you know, a little concern to me if they were going to move further back on the property, that they were getting closer and closer, literally, to the patio of my But I'm understanding from what the lady said earlier that that was an actual survey of the property. But the rainwater being my major concern, and also being able to still have access to my backyard, the other side of my property slopes greatly, and being able to access the back if I needed a new air conditioning unit put in, if a truck needed to get in because I was trimming or taking out a tree and being able to get out, the lower side of my property, the slope would not allow a truck to go there. It's really difficult even for a mower, a little bit difficult there. So I'd be interested in being able to keep some access for the occasional use to the back of my property. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Debbie. Nate, you want to address any of that for the drainage particularly?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Before we started, we had it, I had it drawn up about two weeks before we submitted it to the office. I found Earl, as you all know, that's kind of hard to do sometimes, but I did catch him and showed him the plat, and because of the size of our lot, he said that we would not require a drainage or retention basin. He did say that we would have to provide erosion control for the construction of a new building. That has been done. Duane Campbell did the calculations on that. It was submitted to Earl Monday, so that he has a copy of it. The owner does not have a copy of it yet, but I am getting that copy to the builder sometime today. As for the corners, back in the 90s, central Kentucky surveying, which was Mr. Wesley, did the original bonded building, and the pins that were set then are, either we found them or reset them according to the survey, of that survey. This lot is in the subdivision of, the subdivision that Mrs. Johnson is in. So the plat is old, it was done back in the, I want to say the 50s or the 60s, so there's been no change in lot lines. It just happens to be, that's the way it was drawn up, that's the way it was when her house was built. Nothing I can do about it. But like I say, as for the drainage, Earl did not require any retention basin.
Any other questions, comments?
Will that ensure that there's not a problem with the drainage for her property?
I'm not gonna say that. It's, I will say, it's all in grace, and when I was there, the two, the three times that I had been there talking to the owner, it has been very well maintained and mowed. It's not grown up, but it is all in grace.
Sometimes you see like a curb along the back of a parking lot or something to try to help keep the water from going over. Does that exist here, or is that something to consider?
No, it does not. There is, I really can't say. I've been out there, I do business there, but as for a curb, there is, the way it drops off in the back, there is no way to get it to the street. And I don't remember where there's a curb around the parking lot or not. I just flat don't remember.
Is there something directing the water toward her house, or is it just the natural lay of the land?
Natural lay of the, if you'll notice, all those lines in behind, that is the contours of the property, and you can see that it drops off drastically.
How many comment on the drainage? Our city engineer didn't arbitrarily just waive this off. We have standards when we trigger drainage plans. Again, we're gonna have a case. We know when we get full blown drainage, an existing building of this magnitude, a small addition would not trigger a drainage study, drainage plan, drainage calculations. There's erosion control and stormwater control with construction is what we're saying is gonna have to happen. If there's a perceived drainage issue on the property or neighboring properties, the chances it's gonna stay the same. It's not gonna change. It's kind of, all that's kind of grandfathered into some level. But what's interesting is we are reducing rooftop a tad bit. Doesn't mean that anything will probably change, but there's no authority for us to really push any hard drainage infrastructure into this site plan approval. Again, it's a very minor addition. If it was a bigger addition, it was a rebuild, it was a new site, we'd be looking at drainage on a different level, and we'd be trying to possibly make some improvements, or at least not make anything worse. It's basically what our drainage standards are, is we don't make things worse, and we do drainage analysis at certain thresholds. This didn't meet that threshold, nor would it, or you expect it would in something this small. But the perception is probably accurate, it's historic, and that's probably how it's gonna continue, unless the two neighbors maybe agree to- maybe agree to something themselves to maybe, you know, remedy a solution or something. But we'd be glad to look at it and suggest something, but we don't have any authority to push anything into the site plan approval on drainage, other than just, you know, kind of accepting that there is a problem. And we go out and check it out, maybe onsite, and see what we can suggest. But again, you can imagine, the city can't go out and push full blown drainage plans on every kind of minor addition we do like that. It would cost applicants thousands and thousands of dollars to do full blown drainage studies on everything and then make improvements of whatever magnitude, so.
I just was wondering with construction going to go on, if there was anything that they might be able to help alleviate based on their own goodwill, you know, not requiring, but just simply being there, going to be there if there was anything they might could do. I didn't know.
So this is interesting, Chairman, that you brought this up, because one of the things we're going to talk about in the new business is applicants and signatures and who represents who in public meetings. Today, we got a survey engineering firm here on site plan approval that might need to have a tweak here on the floor. You guys may be inclined to add a condition or a suggestion or an attachment. Yet we don't have the applicant in the room to say, I do, or I agree, or this is that. Our attorney's going to talk to us about this in public hearing settings for zone change, site plans, board of adjustments, why it's important for applicants to maybe be present at times if the board starts to go down and add conditions to site plan approvals or zone changes, why we can't just have the technical folks here. Because again, it's a valid question. You guys have the authority to suggest things in any public hearing setting and say, hey, we'd like to see this added. We'd like to see this addressed. I can tell you, our regs don't trigger drainage studies at this level. But the board has all the authority to say, well, you know, we'd like to see this. We'd like a note of this type on this approval or a condition. That's all in your all's authority. But we don't have an applicant in the room to basically say, I'm willing to do it. So that's something we're going to talk about. And I think that's a great topic and a great lead in. But I think you guys could suggest a note if that's what you wanted. And I defer to the attorney on that.
Yeah, I think if we suggest anything, we should do it while the person's here, only because it looks like you're trying to do something sort of in their back. It might not create the greatest relations with the neighbor. So for me, I mean, I won't say table it or something, but I think if we can, that would excite the owner of the property to maybe be at the next meeting or be at the technical, some sort of meeting to talk about it, you know, because otherwise you create maybe not such a great situation by trying to help.
Sure.
You know, I don't know. I mean, I just
So here's what I think we should do in this setting. This is interesting. We don't want slow up site plan approvals and table and these type of things. But it's very appropriate that we add the conditions, and those could be preliminary approvals. We could approve this site plan with the condition that the drainage be reviewed by the staff, property owner and the neighbor, and we don't move to the next step until there's a check off. I'm used to approving site plans with kind of wording like, site plan approved, pending final drainage analysis, final landscape, parking study be revised. I mean, I've seen site plans where we have preliminary information and we approve it to keep this thing rolling. But then we make, we're looking at hard stormwater studies or drainage studies after the fact. And we don't sign off to the next step because you all made that a condition. In this case, this is really a minor addition, and there's very little authority for us to really push this drainage issue too far. I think maybe on this one, us meeting with the property owner onsite and getting a look at this thing. Hopefully, it's a rainy day or something where we can see some things. And let's see what we see. And then I could communicate with Earl and let's just talk about what might work. But it would have to be almost in this case, a voluntary effort between the two property owners, maybe. This one's a good lead in for that, but I don't know if we really have a solution or an approval, other than we'd be tabling this a month. And again, I'll
No, I agree with Steve that his suggested handling so that you keep the matter rolling is good. We're treading on barely thin ice here by making, you know, demands about a drainage study, since our regulations don't require it. But I think we have some authority to take a look at it and see what might be done to alleviate some of the problem. Ms. Johnson has, of course, a private course of action against the Marathon Station. I think it would be difficult to, might be difficult to kind of unwind, well, you know, what was the drainage before the station was there and all that blacktop was there at this point in time. But I suspect that the owner, just to try to maintain good relations with the neighbors, if it's not terribly expensive, might be willing to make some alterations. And I think Steve's probably the best person to try to mediate that situation.
David, you have any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any comments or questions with regard to this proposal? Motion?
Steve, you may want to suggest a motion that you'd like to hear.
I think you guys should approve it and add the tad condition to the staff, meet with the two property owners and explore the drainage concern made by a neighbor. And then I get a remedy or at least some conclusion on that. I think possibly before the building permit's issued. But the zoning permit needs to happen first anyhow. And if that's their intention to come get that tomorrow, we could keep going. And that actually kind of gives me some of that review anyhow. But then, yeah, I'll try to get something, some answer maybe before the building permit's issued. But I don't want to hold up something that, again, I don't know their timeline, but I agree with the attorney, there's not much we can do except try to talk to them and work it out. But just, maybe I'll make that a condition that I investigate that on, based on the neighbor and meet with Nancy and the neighbor. Maybe we can go out there onsite and see what we can see. Doesn't sound like an official motion.
Somebody say so moved.
I'll say so moved.
Terry makes the motion with those conditions. Jenny, you got that? Ben seconds. Questions, discussion on the motion to approve with the idea that our director meet with the owners to see if any drainage issues could be resolved? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you, David. New business budget committee report. Terry, you want to do that, please?
Yeah, it's Steve's request the budget committee met, I guess it was on Monday, to consider a couple of things that Steve wanted us to talk about. One were bank accounts. And the second was the external, status of the external audit. In attendance was Steve, Jennifer, myself, Jerry and David. And the first topic that Steve wanted us to talk about was bank accounts. And right now, we have six bank accounts and one certificate of deposit. And the six bank accounts are made up of four surety accounts. When you looked at the letters of credit a few minutes ago in your packet, the first four of those listed, each have an individual bank account where the dollars that are shown there are contained in that, that individual bank account. So we have four bank accounts, one for each letter of credit, which means if we have sixteen letters of credit, in the past, we would have had sixteen separate bank accounts with a letter of credit each one. And then we have another general bank account. And then we also had a separate account that had our vehicle replacement dollars in it that we're setting aside to four, five, ten years from now, buying a new vehicle when the current one wears out. And then in addition to that, we had about a $5,000 CD. And, but Steve's proposal was, is that we consolidate those to two bank accounts. One that would hold all the surety letters of credit dollars. And of course, we would have a separate itemization as to what's in that, what makes up that account. And then just one other account, bank account, which would be all the general account would have the general dollars in it, as well as anything that we were setting aside for replacing a vehicle, that type of thing. And also, we look at just cashing the letter of credit because we're really not making any interest at all. And just to clean everything up.
CD.
The CD.
CD. Cash the CD. It's about $5,000. And put that in the general account. So we have a really good picture of everything that we're dealing with here. And after some discussion, the budget committee gave Steve authority to make those consolidations. So from six bank accounts down to two. And so I guess the opportunities here is, do you have any questions or comments or concerns based on the direction that the budget committee gave Steve to go ahead and proceed and do this?
I mentioned that the surety one would be a restricted account. So when you put those four cash sureties in there, that would be a checking account that's restricted by nature. It'll be on your finance report every single month. We'll show you the balance of that. We'll even break down what we're calling the surety. So those cash sureties, the city ends up finishing the project, we write them a check, one goes away. Again, it's going to be easier for us to have one account with five sureties in it. One advantage too, then, is any interest we might accumulate on that banking, it's going to not be much. But we call that a construction reserve. You know, we are generating interest on those cash sureties. And then, you know, down the road, we short a buck here or there, we have the ability to kind of push that interest around to which project we may need to finish. Our goal is never to finish a project. We're to us to make, do the money. The developer is responsible to finish the project. We're holding that money. But unfortunately, sometimes we'll skip way back in the rearview mirror and someone's got to finish them and write the check. And it's very likely we won't have enough money to finish any of those projects based on the balance that we're holding. That's another issue for the superiors another day. But having them in one checking account, I think it's better management of that money, better way for y'all to see it monthly. So you will see both those checking account balances every single month in your finance report. And I haven't done that yet. The budget committee said, sounds like a decent idea. But we want to wait till the full planning commission heard this. We've edited. You guys give us feedback. I haven't gone through tonight yet on that. If you guys, I don't know if that's voted on or not, but it's just
I don't know if it's something that's been voted on, but we're just giving you an opportunity to comment on it. We're opposed any concerns.
Questions to Terry or Steve with regard to that proposal from budget committee? Anything else, Terry?
Not on the bank account.
Okay.
The other topic that Steve wanted us to talk about was just the external audit. You know, we conduct, I think by law, we need to audit every two years. But we've been auditing every year. We intend to continue auditing every year. And so we initiated that work a few months ago to start the audit of last year because we wanted to be sure. Obviously, we have a good audit going forward with Steve, so we knew exactly what we did have. And so a few months ago, we put an ad in the newspaper requesting bids for the annual audit. And those bids were due by June 15th, and we got no bids. Okay? And so what Steve is recommending is that instead of doing a bid, where we post an ad in the newspaper, that we do an RFP, that we will prepare a request for proposal document and then send that out to the accounting firms in the area to solicit bids to try to make sure we get a bid on an audit. And so that was a discussion that we had. And then in your packet is the RFP that we're proposing to send out. This was reviewed by the budget committee on Monday. It is also been reviewed by the city. And the city is very comfortable with it and agrees with the way it's worded and the content and that type of thing. And so, and so, you know, if you just, I'm not requesting that you go through this in any detail. The budget committee did that. And so you're provided a courtesy copy. But in general, let me just give you an overview of what's in here. It's offering a five-year contract that has to be renewed annually. So as long as, you know, someone who's performing our audit is doing a good job, et cetera, we would renew this annually. But it's requesting that they give us a five-year contract quote, year by year quote. The scope of the work is outlined, obviously, in the RFP. And it's not really any different than what we've had done in prior years. The RFP asks that the bids are due early September. And the bids will then be reviewed by the budget committee. And if you're interested in the valuation criteria, it's on page five, how the bids will be evaluated. It won't be solely based on who's low bid. It's going to look at the entire proposal by the firms. Not saying it wouldn't be recommended based on low bid. At any rate, the budget committee will review those. And then our intent would then to bring our recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Commission at our September 6th meeting, saying, you know, this is a result of the RFPs. We had so many respond. We reviewed these. And this is what the budget committee is recommending to the Planning and Zoning Commission to proceed with. And then, of course, you'd have an opportunity to vote on it at that time. And then we're also asking that the audit be completed by November 30th. And so we authorized Steve to go ahead and proceed with the RFP. And so again, we're giving you any chance to ask any questions or any comments before we go ahead and proceed with the RFP. And again, we'll bring the results back to the full commission for your approval, hopefully at the September 6th meeting.
Questions for budget committee or Terry on that? Or to Steve?
That's all I have then.
Okay. I'd like to thank the budget committee for meeting in the work that they're doing. Next item is Personnel Committee report. I'm not sure what Steve put there, but I will say the Personnel Committee report is that we met and hired this guy. So that's the last thing we've actually done as a committee. But anyway, Steve, you had some comments on that if you want to make.
Personnel committee met. And again, just went over my contract. We fine tuned a couple of things. We'll just say it publicly. I think we all agreed, contract was pretty vanilla. Had my rate, but I had added an addendum in the initial contract. And I wanted to make sure this one got added. And the second, the second contract, y'all set a four day salary, five day salary in the future. And just wanted to make sure I'd added a little caveat in there that we do a six month evaluation, make sure I'm doing my job, you know, sooner than later type thing. Get this, get an opportunity for Personnel Committee, set me down mid-year and just make sure we're all on the right track. That's in there. How my orientation was to be structured was in there, but we're already past that. That's all it was in the addendum. And then that contract was executed between us and the chairman, me and the chairman. So the other thing, we talked about work hours for a few minutes, the office hours, staffing, how we anticipate, dealing with some of the stuff that's been directed or been told to me what we need to work on. I suggested at that, that I would like to attempt to cover the five day window through scheduling initially. Then we'll come back in October and talk about me, four day, five day, full staff, whatever. But I think it would be very easily, very easy to open office every day at 8:30, close it every day at 5:00 through just scheduling of the three staff. I brought that up with the other two employees. I want us to get a game plan real soon on how we're going to do that. I really wanted to start it last week. I think it's going to be fairly easy. The proof is kind of our, you know, top person in the office there, Jenny, she's really been kind of holding down the fort over the last month or so. And she clearly has an understanding of all our processes and she's been a big help to me. I'm comfortable that if I was working Monday through Thursday and she's Tuesday through Friday or whatever, and we got cell phones and that, that we can have the door open and still maintain the business. So that's what I'd like to do initially. And I talked to Personnel Committee about that approach. Basically, they told me, run the office, you're the director. So it didn't give me much help really. But I wanted to just bring that up to you guys. They were helpful. And just get feedback. Because I think that's a way, a good way that we can handle this initially is just, you know, we can all work 32 hours and have doors open 37 and a half a week. Seems very easily, easy to me. But we got coordinate schedules and family issues and other things. But that's what I'm going to try and work with the staff. And again, I just wanted to throw that out there and get any feedback from you guys on that. That's all the Personnel Committee did, was my contract and talk about office hours. And I wanted to make sure they understood. I'd like to try some scheduling things creatively to address that five day work week. And I'm glad to answer any questions you guys might have on that. And, yes, sir.
I think, I think it's a good time to do a trial. You guys figuring it out the way you think it should work before you move into October and come up with a more permanent plan. And so I think you're the most qualified as an office to do that. And I think everybody probably agree that we should just leave it in your hands to take care of that.
Plan A is we're just going to get some straws. Short straws work on Friday, it looks like. The other guy gets Monday through Thursday. I don't know. I really don't know. I've never had this type of thing presented to me before all the jobs I ever worked with Monday through Friday, you know. So this is different. But I do understand why we need to be open on Fridays and why the window needs to go up at 8:30 and stay open till 5:00. It's real simple. We just need to coordinate lunches and breaks and schedules. And I think we can do it. And the staff's open to it. We just got to figure out when we start and how we do it. And I think we could And I think we could even make it flexible for the other two where maybe I'm pulling a different style and then they're kind of just in and out and they could alternate. For example, Tuesday through Thursday, you could alternate and one has a long weekend every other weekend. I mean, you know, we could do that. We could all switch around and alternate. I'm flexible, I'll work Fridays if that's what we need to do. But just wanna try it and see, see how it goes. And then we'll talk to you guys, Personnel Committee later in the year about when I actually go full-time or not, or whatever you guys desire for that to be. I'm open on anything, so. That's all I had, unless you had something from that meeting. I think that was about it.
Stay up there, Stan, Steve.
Yes, sir.
Item three, the fiscal year 18 committees, you wanted to speak today?
Yeah, so you guys got a packet. Jenny made a little list of our committee assignments in there. Some of them on officers, you guys see there's some dates. And obviously, our officer dates, we take care of that April through March, so we'll look, look at officers. But we have other committees, some which I don't think we need anymore, some might just be older. Obviously, we just talked about the budget personnel. Obviously, we have a technical review and we have some officers on here, which are really independent in this committee. Didn't know which ones maybe we wanna strike, maybe divvy up jobs different, who wants to be on what committees. And then I'm gonna suggest we form a new committee that's gonna be a hybrid committee that's gonna be very different. And we'll talk about that in a second. But these other committees, Personnel, Budget, I think we got the right people on. But if the chairman thought we should switch around, these other committees, I think, are maybe committees in the community that you all serve on, or those are committees Transportation, Streetscape, Beautification. Wasn't sure what a one-man committee was and what those were on paper. How those, are those just things we've had historically?
Those are community committees and a member of Planning and Zoning serves on them.
So those aren't our committees, those aren't.
They're not our committees, no.
That's, that's your all's assignment on those other committees.
The community or state committee, as the case may be.
All those meet regular or they're still current?
Transportation has not met for two or three years now.
Does it even exist, or?
Well, it's, it exists in name, but the mayor and/or the city commission has not really pushed anybody to take the lead in that and get it meeting again. But we did meet quite regularly, particularly when the state had planned a change in the lane structure for Main Street and taking it from four lanes to two lanes and a center turn lane. We met a whole lot during that, but after that went away.
Well, I'll investigate where they're at, where they exist, then come back to you guys. And again, if the right folks are on it, wasn't suggesting any changes. Just trying to make sure I understood what committees we have as Planning Commission committees. Obviously, the Conference of Plan Committee down there at the bottom was probably formed when we were drafting the committee. We've got a new comp plan, I'm sure that one can kind of go away, I guess. Five years from now, we gotta review it again, we can restructure it. But I'll scratch that off. I know what Flood Plan Appeals are. So really, our main committees then are Personnel and Budget and Technical Review then. Does that sound right? And again, I don't know how you all divvy up the jobs, but if there's others that wanna participate that are newer on the commission, I guess this is an opportunity for y'all to say, I'm interested in that. And I think the committee structure is pretty loose. We could have one, two, three, whatever. So not much more on that. The Technical Review, the way I understand it, we have a chairman and vice chairman, and then we have one commissioner rotate through, is that correct? Each time? I only saw two the last, that works well, I think. But if there's one that maybe wants to serve on that more, I don't see why that couldn't be a three-man committee all the time. Or if I guess the rotation is convenient to all you guys, then we'll just leave that like it is. But, so the committee I'm suggesting we add is not really gonna be 100% a Planning Commission committee. I've been thinking out loud to myself, I've been driving up every morning, about how we tackle some of these things that are on my mind, about processes and ordinances and fees and whatnot, budgets, audits, whatever. I would like to form what I'm gonna call an advisory committee. And that committee would be a hybrid of magistrates, city commissioners and planning commissioners. And that would be kind of a committee that I could have as a sounding board to think about ideas, present ideas in a collective fashion to fiscal court, city commission, planning commission. I think it would be really positive. Some, sounds like I'm making this up and I'm real smart, but actually, it's already been brought up by the other governments that this would be a good thing. And so what I'd like to do again is just make sure you guys are okay with it. We'd call it an advisory committee. And it would meet probably monthly. And again, it would have two magistrates, two planning commissioners and two city commissioners. The mayor and the city would figure out and then judge who they want from their ends. You guys would decide who needs to serve on that committee for us. The chairman and vice chairman seem to make sense to me there, but they got a lot of responsibilities. And some of you guys may specifically be interested in some of this process-oriented stuff. So it's, it's kind of up to you guys. But I just want you guys to say you're okay with me going down that road with this committee. And then who serves on it? I can tell you it's gonna be a working committee. We're gonna meet once, twice a month. I've got a lot of ideas and I wanna take it to this committee and say, hey, here's what I'm thinking about and clearly understand what the magistrates would think or impact, fiscal impacts, city too. And some of these, again, are gonna relate to the ordinances, things we just talked about, the site plans. You know, my personal opinion, our threshold for site plan approval is tad bit high. There probably should be some things that fall under that criteria that, not exemptions, but again, a minor addition on a building like that, in my opinion, probably shouldn't have been a full site plan approval. Those are the things, though, that are in our books, that can't be fixed without amendments. So this advisory committee will be looking at zoning ordinance, subregs, processes, plaits, signature blocks on plaits, notes, just streamlining things. That's exactly what they're gonna do. And give me guidance on that before I bring it back to you guys and the parent governments. So if you guys are okay with it, we'd call advisory and that's what it would be. Planning Commission still has all the same authority y'all have to, for example, amend the subregs if we ever do. But I think it'd be helpful to have the other two governments in the room and us think about those things. Again, any feedback, questions you guys got on that or people that wanna serve on that advisory committee? Jerry, you got any comments on that, or?
I'm, I'm okay with it personally. And I think professionally, it's a good step in the right direction to bring the three agencies together and then get a better understanding of the expectations and what
Absolutely.
what we all see needs to be done in terms of, as we've heard that term, becoming business friendly.
As you guys know, I've worked in jurisdictions very progressive, 20 years. I had an advisory committee, but it was different. It was citizens, developers, planning commissioners, city, county, six governments on there. I had six governments. My advisory committee was about 30 people. It's almost unmanageable. But it was required that I had to get the blessing of that advisory committee before I took anything to the Planning Commission. Anything. That advisory committee, including, made up of citizens and developers. We all worked as a team to push our documents forward, create our landscape ordinance, doctor up our sign ordinance. It's very, very problematic for me, but it was just part of the job. That, those guys were the sounding board. They had to basically rubber stamp it before the Planning Commission took the next step. I'm scaling this back. I think we don't need it like that. We can solicit opinions if we're in a certain part of the ordinance we're talking about. Sure, we'll go talk to engineers and surveyors, get some feedback, maybe invite some other folks in to tell us what they think about our sign ordinance or landscape ordinance or whatever we're talking about, drainage, stormwater, whatever. The subregs are real technical, they'll bore us all to death. And we'll bring the technical folks in to tell us what works and what doesn't work. I think it'd be positive. But again, a couple magistrates, a couple city commissioners, a couple planning commissioners, I think would be a good start. We might expand it down the road. But I wouldn't advise a 30-member advisory committee at this point because it made my head hurt every day. What y'all think? Sound good to you guys? Got volunteers? There's one.
I'll be happy to do that.
You guys okay if chairman and vice chair serve and others want? We can make three planning commissioners, I'm fine.
Great.
You guys okay with that?
I think, I think if they're at the meetings and they have, it seems like there's gonna be a lot of extra work that needs to be done. They can miss any of the number of us that's able to help. That way, you know, I think it would work just fine.
Yeah, I think it'd be good. And then we will report back to you guys. And again, I'm not sure where we're going, but I'm zooming in on a few small processes, plaits to start with. Just some small stuff that I think would make some efficiencies that you guys would be proud of in the long term. But I want that committee to look at it first. So, thank you, guys. Thank you, Jerry.
Okay, item four, bylaws interlocal agreement?
Nothing there, just wanted to put it in your packet. If you guys haven't seen them, I think you guys all have them. It's the first thing I, when I accepted the job, I wanted to see our bylaws. I wanted to see our interlocal agreement. Our interlocal agreement is how we are a planning commission. Again, I was taken aback, just a foot or two, just that they seemed a little bit dated. They were awful thin to what I'm used to seeing. That advisory committee may look at that interlocal agreement as a first blush. That's how our funding works. That's how we work as a team with the other governments. It's all our authority to be a planning commission. And there's several things not in that that surprised me. Most interlocal agreements, little more specific than that, maybe by one page. But ours has very little guidance in it. Does sort of give a funding split, was interesting. The bylaws, ours are very dated, 1994, I believe. Again, there should be a lot more in the bylaws about how we left officers and things we do internal. I think I can bring you a housekeeping bylaw amendment at the next meeting that you guys can get ahead of time and look at and realize, hey, this is typically what a planning commission would have in a set of bylaws. We, ours are pretty old and pretty thin again. So those are just things I'm personally interested in, nothing major. You've got them in your packet if you've never seen them. And those are your official bylaws. The interlocal agreement is a contract between the planning commission and the cities and the counties in this joint planning commission. And if we ever amend it, change it, it actually has to be signed by all the entities, sent to the Secretary of State's office to be reviewed, signed off on if we ever tweak our interlocal agreement. As you can see, all the original cities are named on there, county, us, and that's our interlocal agreement. Typically, planning commissions would look at that every few years, five years, or we're gonna move into office or do something major. It would be structured in that contract. That's a contract.
One of your cities isn't a member of Planning Zone anymore?
Well, that's interesting to me. I had that happen in my jurisdiction and that's how we came together. Usually, that's how we come apart. That's still the agreement. So how all that happened and what the status of that other city and their, their authority as land use regulations is of interest to me, but I haven't even looked at it. I'd like to meet with the mayor of Junction City and just say hello, introduce myself and just talk and just, just as, you know, again, they're doing, they're still doing some land use planning in Junction City. I believe they're still following the subregs. They've got a construction project in process, but we're not involved in any of that. They don't, they don't, no longer have a zoning ordinance or adhered to the comp plan or signed off. I'm not sure I gotta get my terms right. But I understand the subregs are still alive and well and there's plaits and construction. So I'm just curious how all that was structured. And I'm gonna get with Bruce eventually and say, how did we come together and how did they unwind? And where's what authority and is there a role we still have to serve under the subdivision regulations if they're still being enforced in Junction City? So town looks good to me when I drive through. And again, I'd just like to say hello to the mayor and see what's going on and just get his feedback and maybe him give me a history lesson on where we got to the point where I And so I understand what documents or what to. And Bruce, anything on that? You know historically or anything I should know or you can report?
I need to revisit. We had a lawsuit involving Junction City some years ago. At the time, they withdrew. And I need to revisit that and see whether or not it will have any impact going forward. I can say that there are some state law, state laws that come into play in terms of how cities and counties interact with each other in, in planning commission situations, which were not, were not heated when Junction City decided to withdraw. But I think at the time, there wasn't much of an interest on the part of this body to pursue or, or further discuss or contest what Junction City was doing. So my, I mean, Steve's gonna talk to the mayor down there. I will certainly look at that lawsuit and, and, and and refresh my memory on the state laws and maybe we can report back to you and say, okay, here's the situation. But I guess it's probably not, it's probably more of a decision for the legislative bodies than, than this, this body, this commission, in terms of what they wanna do going forward.
And again, my, my interest was just, again, I'm not suggesting we change anything. That city's got authority under home rule, be a city, do what they want. It was interesting to me that the interlocal agreement didn't address any of the unwinding part, which normally where you'd see that. Number two, I've seen a plat, had Junction City on it. So I'm just curious how the plating is still there, but the zoning's not. I just wanna basically educate myself and meet the mayor. And again, I'm not gonna suggest they do anything other than, hey, what exactly are we still doing? And what role do you, do you see is happening? But I think subdivision is still in play countywide under the subdivision regulations. And again, plaits are still being looked at. But we just don't, the way I understand it, we have, we don't have a zoning ordinance in play and the conference of plan is now basically all the rest of the county except that. I've dealt with something similar to that, but the city ended up going out, coming back. But all of that was in an interlocal agreement. So I just looked at it to see, hey, I was just curious what year they, and I didn't see any verbiage. So doesn't mean they're not exactly where they need to be. But I'm just curious how the plating is supposed to function and what role maybe the mayor and the city expect of the staff or the planning commission in that plat review. But the way I understand it, again, we've looked at a few things. I think those things are still happening. And then all the permitting and stuff is happening through the local jurisdiction, which they can do. And actually, I understand that. But I just thought one day I'd holler at the mayor and just say hello and what's, what's going on or how did we get here? And, and what can I do for you guys? And if we're still doing plating, so.
At that time, for what it's worth, I did meet with the mayor and tried to encourage him not to have Junction City withdraw and stay with us. And then he even met a second time and tried to encourage him to come back in, but to no avail. So, but, but I did make a few efforts to keep them with us, but again, it's not successful. And they had pretty much made up their mind that we were a hindrance to them being developed mind and progressive and so forth. And that, from my perspective and what, what our conversation was, that's why they chose to withdraw, that we were in their way in terms of them moving forward and developing.
From 1966 to where I'm from, Bowling Green, the zoning ordinance was adopted in '53. The other cities came on board in '66. We had six zoning ordinances from '66 to 2004, six. We had five boards of adjustments, as each city can have their own. We had one planning commission and we had one conference of plan no one could ever find. But it was, it was hard. But when we got ready to make a new zoning ordinance and try to pull it, we had some that said, look, we can't live with that. So we ended up really writing three zoning ordinance a second time around because the small towns just said, look, we don't want what Bowling Green's got, we just need this. And that's how we ended up staying a team. But ultimately, one said, hey, we, we're not comfortable being part of this process. And this is how it works. It's not unusual. I just wanna investigate it, know where we stand as a county and make sure I know all my local governments regardless whether they're part of the planning commission or not. So my reason I brought it up. And Ben's gonna get that right there. The headline that he says, "Planning Commission's marching down Junction City." I'm gonna call him first, Ben. So, nope, next, next one, Jerry's, Bruce?
Yeah, Bruce, legal report, wanna share some things?
Yes. First of all, no litigation. Second of all, as Steve has listed on the agenda, there are some issues about representation and that it starts with when the application is filed. And I think Steve is interested and I would encourage him that when an application is filed, it, it needs to be signed by the landowner and by the applicant if that's a different individual or entity. There are gonna be some matters that come before you. If, if the owner and the applicant aren't present at the meeting, then the individual representing those folks needs to have the authority to bind the owner and applicant in terms of conditions imposed. in terms of conditions imposed. So we've kind of been proceeding on faith. I don't think it's jumped up and caused us any problems yet. And, you know, maybe it won't, but I guess the most cautious approach would be to, let's just make sure that we've got everybody's signature on the application and that if, if Nancy's going to appear on behalf of somebody, she has the authority to commit to conditions. That'll streamline the process a good deal. I mean, certainly save a meeting because if Nancy doesn't have the authority and she says, well, I really can't commit, I got to talk to, then, you know, it's another month. So I think Steve has a concern in that area, and it's an easy, it's easy to address. And so that's, that's one, that's one issue. The second issue.
Hey, first guy, it's that, so the technical review, my first one, I've never done a technical review, it's not a process from my prior jurisdiction. But we had six cases, and I think all of them didn't have the owner's signature on any application. Maybe one, but most, they weren't signed. There was one not signed at all. Most of them were signed by the engineers or surveyors, kind of like by proxy, like Steve Hunter signed, wrote my name, and then said such and such firm. To me, that's not a signature of the owner. Clearly, I believe that we don't take applications without, how do I really know I have the authority to take something to the board, put an ad in the paper if the owner hasn't signed it? I guess historically, we allow these signatures by proxy, so I asked Bruce to give me some guidance on that. And that first technical review, those were several of my comments where, hey, I'd like the applicant to sign the actual application. We'll let you move on to the planning commission, but if you don't care, could you get the signature before the meeting so we can process the case? Plats are plats, but site plans, zone change, I feel it's pretty important that the signature be obtained. I'm used to seeing notarized signatures by all people that have party to a property. So if it was a husband, wife, and grandma, everyone signs and everyone notarizes. In this case, Bruce has just gotten it. We should at least make sure when we take this application through the window that we have signatures on applications, or unfortunately, they don't move forward. We push those through the technical review and just ask those engineer or surveyors to secure those, those signatures. Unfortunately, one did not, wasn't able to do it and said, I can't get their signature. Well, in my opinion, I can't really process your case if I don't have a signature that really gives me clear guidance that the applicant wants to do this. So I don't know, I'm not used to taking applications that aren't signed by the landowner, the corporation, an officer of the corporation, but we had, of the first six, five of them were signed by proxy and one wasn't signed. So I asked Bruce to give me guidance on that, and that's what he suggested, is just make sure the application's signed, and we won't slow anything down. I'm just going to make sure at the point of the application, if it's not signed, we're going to say, hey, we'll take it, but we need this thing signed in the next couple of weeks before you hit the planning commission, or we're not going to be able to hear it. And I don't know any other way to do that, Bruce.
The, I mean, the downside of, once again, I'm not aware that there's been a problem in the past, but going forward, it's entirely possible that the owner doesn't sign the application and we start processing it, and all of a sudden, the owner jumps up and says, wait a minute, I, you know, I'm opposed to this, I don't want it to go forward, or object to this, or object to that. So it's just sort of a prudent thing to do so that we know when we start our effort that everybody's on board, owner and applicant, if the applicant's different than the owner.
And at the technical review, if we had a comment, like we talked about earlier, we had a suggestion. We don't want to go down this road or the engineering firm or say, well, hey, I'm just the engineer. The applicant needs to clearly be able to be around, if it's an application where we're asking for other things, they're the ones that can say, I agree. If the engineer can carry that back to the technical review, but in this form, I think if we wanted a condition tonight on a site plan, we need the applicant to be here to say, I agree.
Or, or, or the, yes, the engineer or whoever's representing the applicant has the authority to bind the owner or the applicant. The second level of this analysis, and I don't know whether this has been brought up in some of your seminars that you've gone to, but there, there is an opinion from the bar association talking about the unauthorized practice of law. And it, it includes zone change presentations, board of adjustment, conditional use permits, variances. I'm, I thought it would be a rather simple thing to figure, figure out, well, okay, what's our path here? But my reading yesterday indicated it's, it's a little murkier than, than I first thought, and I'm going to have to make some telephone calls to, to really, you know, bear down on this. And before we take, before I advise you about it, make a recommendation to you, I need to study this a little bit further. But have, do any of you remember this issue being raised in your, in any kind of seminar? No? Okay. Well, it's, it's, in Nicholasville, they have basically said on zone changes that if you're, you know, an individual owner, you can come in and present it. I mean, as an individual, you have a right to represent yourself in court, so it shouldn't be any different for the planning commission. However, if it's a corporation, then they're, they're requiring that an attorney appear on behalf of the applicant owner and make the presentation. But before we go there, I need to study this just a little further. The city of Nicholasville may have gone a little too far, but that's probably premature for me to say that. But there is this, this opinion from the bar association, and there is also an opinion which says that lawyers are guilty of unprofessional conduct if they aid, abet, or assist an individual in unauthorized practice of law. And it, I mean, I know what the penalty for that is. Bar Association can suspend your license to practice, but I've got to figure out how those two opinions work together before I'm ready to give you a final recommendation, and I'll try to do that next month. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Questions for Bruce on any of those issues facing us? Hearing none, we'll move on.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Okay. My clients are like ivory soap. Ninety-nine point nine percent of them do not want to come before this committee. That is what they're paying me for. This is the first time I had heard that the applicant themselves had to sign the application. My agency letter says that I have the right to present their plats before them and complete any and all applications. I didn't know, I took that, is that I could sign the application by me. Obviously, that's not the case, but I will make that change. Like I say, that was, that was news to me. I do have a question. You brought up board of adjustments. Does the, does an attorney have to present the board of adjustments or the owner, or can I do it?
I haven't said that yet. I'm saying I'm looking into that issue.
Okay.
Okay? That's, I'm, seriously, I think the city of Nicholasville may have kind of jumped the gun, and it's, it's not as simple as they seem to make it. So I haven't, I haven't weighed in, and I will, after I'm through investigating, I'll, I'll make a recommendation or I'll report to this body, and it'll be disseminated.
Okay, so the board of adjustments tomorrow is not going to be affected by?
No, no, ma'am.
Now, we, my firm, Estis Engineering and Surveying, does not, and I repeat, does not do zone changes. In the KRS, it says that if you don't, if you don't present this, this, and this, and this in a direct order, then they cannot come back in with a zone change for two years. I am not going to be that person. So that's the reason when I do, when we prepare a zone change, we have an attorney representing the owner. Thank you.
Okay.
Obviously, so you heard from an attorney, that one sounded expensive, and this one's from an engineer, that sounded expensive, but I'm just telling you what the planner knows here, just common sense, what I know. Bruce is the expert, but what we historically did is applicants signed applications. You know, that's just what we did, whether it's a plat, zone change, CUP, variance, just sign the application. Plats are administrative function under the statute, so a lot of times, the surveyors brought the plats in, always had the owner's signature. Maybe we didn't get it when we brought it in, but we got it at some point before the plat was recorded, make it simple. We know the owner's got a signed plat, so that may be the signature we need too, but clearly, the owner's got to convey the opportunity to put the plat in the courthouse. Surveyor can't sign for that owner to put that plat into the courthouse. So we understand it's in the KRS on subregs, real easy. What we always did was the owner had to be present. If they wanted to do their own case, or they could have a lawyer represent them, or someone that they gave power attorney to. If it's an elderly lady and she was in New York in a home and her daughter was going to come present the zone change, she had to have something on file that said she had the authority to do that. And we only did that on the things where things might evolve on the floor, like a zone change and a conditional use permit, where there might be conditions. Most of the time, the variances and site plans are just real technical. The engineer's the only one there. A lot of times, the chairman says applicant here, no hands, go up, staff would give a quick report on site plan, no one would speak, we vote on it. Wasn't that critical they be in the room because it's a plat or a site plan or a variance. But CUPs and zone changes could change on the floor, and I personally, we were always guided, the applicant should be in a room or someone that can say, I agree to those commitments. So it's just kind of common sense. Now, who can do what? Engineer, surveyor versus attorneys? We got into a big lawsuit in our town about, between landscape architects and surveyors, and who could do a landscape plan, who could do a drainage plan, who could do a plot plan? They were all fighting amongst themselves, and they all went to their state groups and said, well, lawyer can do this, the surveyor can do that, and architect can do that. I just said, someone sign the application and tell me what day we're going to be at the planning commission. But all that stuff is very complicated. I appreciate Bruce bringing it up. I think what we want to do is make sure applications are signed, and we're going to check that off the window regardless from here forward. And then when we get to a zone change or technical, we got BOA meeting tomorrow. CUP, I think the applicant needs to be in a room, and tomorrow night, the applicant's going to be in a room, and his lawyer, and his engineer, because this thing's going to evolve, so, and like it should. So that's kind of how I think we should just guide the client. So if we know we got a zone change, I'm probably going to say, it's probably a good idea the owner be somewhere if we need them, and if you got an attorney, bring the attorney, or you can have both or neither, whatever. I just think the first concern, I saw, I just saw all these applications not signed, and then an agency letter says, I have the authority to represent the client. Well, that's different on a plat, in my opinion, in technical review than a site plan, and the site plan was the one that concerned me more than the plat. So we're just going to button it up a tad bit, and, but we're going to be very flexible. I don't mean I have to have it today before I can look at it. We just need to get it before you guys take action on it. So that's, that's just a floating window, the way I'm looking. That's all I had on that, Jerry.
Okay. Item six, zoning permits.
Jerry, may I make something else, please?
Yes.
Most of the time, I have the authority to make conditions on the plats if you're, the board so presents. However, if I see that there is a, going to be a conflict, I will have the owner here. But it would be nice to know what those conflicts are at technical review so that if I cannot answer the questions that you all have, I can have the owner here. And that is just, I think if, if the technical review, there's going to be something that I cannot handle, then I will have the owner here. Okay?
I guess what?
I'm asking that at technical review, if you see anything that I can't handle, to let me know.
Sure, I understand.
Okay, fine.
My thinking would be, there may be one of us, obviously not at technical review, that might have an issue that, you know, and it doesn't come up till we get here.
I understand. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Item six, zoning permits.
Just wanted to put them in your packet. I think they get emailed to you guys, I know some emails were issued, so we're going to put that in the packet every month. That's what we did July. That's how many permits we did, dollars, uses, whatever, and they're all there just as a courtesy review too.
Maybe, maybe for me, for me, I kind of looked through your information that I have. It's hard for me to understand what the differences are between some of these costs.
Okay.
You know, like you see something that's, estimated cost of this building is $400,000 and the fee is $525.
Yep.
The estimated cost of this building is $33,000, and the fee is almost $400. So, I mean, why is, why is that? I mean, I just want to know for my own self.
So zoning permits are kind of our, our, our main funding source that we get, and again, what, what those are is most, most everything needs a zoning permit. It feels to me like a dual building permit. You're going to come into our office and make an application, it feels and reads like a building permit application, and you're going to tell us what you're doing, and you're going to tell us the square foot of your building, and the estimated cost of the building. We really don't need, but it gets put on there. What we're really evaluating are the square footages of the building, and we're charging 20 cents a square foot for commercial industrial and 16 cents a square foot for residential style. So the dollars relate to the square footage. The estimated cost, again, I'm not sure why we need that on our permit. Our permit looks like a building permit, and then once you're done with us, then you go get a real building permit, pay them a different amount. But our fees are generated off the square footages at 20 cents a square foot or 16 cents.
Okay, I see the difference with that.
That'd be the difference. And then there's a minimum. If you're below all that, you're going to pay $65 regardless. So that's why you'll see a 65 occasionally on here.
Okay.
Signed permits are different. It's a different kind of permit. We have the fees structured a different way. But what's interesting here, you got locations, but the building types are interesting. You see shed, residential addition, deck, garage, addition, barn. So what, what you're seeing, there's a commercial addition, that, that $525 came off at 26, 27 at 20 cents.
Okay.
So we just want to throw those out there, but what's interesting is that's how many we did for the whole month. It's not a whole bunch, but the dollar amounts are interesting because again, they come off the square footages. My first day on the job, we collected two, and I can tell you that, that's a point of frustration for some folks, at 20 cents a square foot, writing a check for those, and they're, and again, I'm still trying to figure out what we really do in the field for this fee. I'm not sure what the zoning permit does at this point. I'm figuring that out. And then once you're done with this, you go get a building permit. If your project is under state plan review, you actually have to submit your plan to the state, and then we hold the zoning permit till the state signs off and then says we can move forward. So we do it vice versa, depending if it's local plan reviewer state. So just going to put these in the packet every month so you all can see them, and we'll maybe get more detail on what the, what actually the use is, and what would be helpful to me is the zoning too, because the zoning plays a role in that too. So that's everything.
Any other questions, comments? Any other good for the order? Hearing none, motion to adjourn. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
You're going to have to ask. There's a question. The advisory committee meeting could be open.
I don't know any reason they would not be unless there's something that we have to discuss that the attorney tells us we need to do it in closed session. Otherwise, they would be. Okay. Anything else? Motion to adjourn. David makes it, second by Susie. All in favor, we're adjourned. Thank you.